The next meeting will be December 28, 2016. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you plan on speaking tonight, stand up, please, to be sworn in. Raise your right hand. You sort of tell the truth of the whole truth and not the truth of all that you've got? All right, have a seat. I got it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with petitions in the order that they are listed on the agenda unless the Board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this Board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the Board to grant the request. The Chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all in an interest of time. Refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening. But the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones. Before we proceed tonight with a couple more housekeeping items, because we only have three people on the Board tonight, all the petitions being heard need to get a unanimous yes to be approved. If you get two yeses and one no, the petition will be denied. And so you need to get three yeses. With that being said, all petitioners have a choice to postpone the hearing until we If the petition is denied for whatever reason, or if you don't get all three yeses and you do get a no, the petition is denied, I don't believe there's no appeal, or I don't think you can. You can't, okay, you'd have to go through an appeal process, so. When you do come up, please give the usual, please remember to sign in on the sheet, and there is a microphone in front of you. Make sure the light is lit. The first petition is Buckley Abbott LLC, variance under Section 2.02.13E4C of the zoning ordinance to permit an addition 19.3 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 436 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Elderly and Town Center Overlay District Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 007, Case Number Being that the second, the fourth petition is also the same, and obviously if the third, if this petition goes and go through, you're not going to proceed with the next one. Is that correct? Obviously, because if you don't get the, if you don't get the approval for the 19 feet, there's no sense of doing the wetland setback.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, and...
And if you don't get the wetlands setback, there's no sense of doing, then you're not going to get the 19 feet.
Right. I was going, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just for the record, my name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer at Weiner Bennett Nashville, representing Buckley Abbott LLC, the applicant and owner of the property. I was, I'm just going to ask you, Mr. Chairman, would you want us to proceed, did they combine presentation for the two and then the Board vote separately? Would that be most efficient time-wise for you?
I was thinking the same exact thing, and I was just going to read the next petition in while you sign in.
Sure, that would make sense. Thank you very much.
So we'll also be making, not only will we be hearing about the first variance, but we'll also be hearing about the second variance, which I will read in now. Buckley Abbott LLC, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 2.02.7A6 of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 27.3 feet from the edge of the wetlands, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 436 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Elderly and Town Center Overlay District Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 007, Case Number 2016-40. Just to reiterate with the Board, we are hearing both, we are combining the petitions of 39 and 40, moving forward. Tony, got it? What's that? All right.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Again, Brad Westgate, representing the applicant. With me is Michael Buckley, who's the Principal of Buckley Abbott LLC, which is the owner of the Buckley's Bakery and Cafe on Daniel Webster Highway, right adjacent to the fire station. Also with me is Spencer Tate of Meridian Land Services, Meridians, and the engineers on this property, and done the soil scientist and wetland work as well. The, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any new documentation, but I just did put up on the, on an easel, the large-scale copies of the two plans that we submitted with the application. There was an existing conditions plan and a proposed conditions plan, just to show where the proposed addition to the kitchen would be placed. And I also brought copies of those just for the convenience of the Board. Mr. Chairman, if I may...
We actually, we actually have copies of those, they're in our packets.
Sure. I just, I highlighted the setback, the wetland, edge of wetland and the property lines, just because it's, I thought it might be easier to read than a non-highlighted one. There's a lot of lines that are close on those applications.
No, we got it, we got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, just in terms of documents, I know that the Conservation Commission provided input to the zoning Board last week, and there was an email letter from H. Perry to the Chair that summarized their conclusions. Have all the Board members received that? Because I did bring copies in case you hadn't.
Fortunately, can't accept copies at the time of the hearing, but you can make, I'll allow you to, you know, go ahead and make reference, you can make reference to the...
I didn't know if they made it through the, through the email system of Town Hall to you all. That's the only reason I mentioned it. I'll reference it if that's better.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'll try to, I'll try to, I'll try to summarize this presentation as most efficiently as I can. So we're seeking the two variances, one from the rear yard setback requirement of 40 feet in the Town Center District, the other from the 40-foot edge of wet setback requirement. The proposed addition to the property would be 14 by, feet by 39 feet, the backside of, on the fire, excuse me, the fire station side of the building, on the back end of it. The idea is to add space for the kitchen, to, so that more baking equipment can be put in, better kitchen apparatus, food storage, possible cooler space, and the like. You may know the property, I'm sure you do, and modifications and additions and renovations to the kitchen would be extremely helpful to the operation of the bakery. As mentioned, the addition would only be about 19.3 feet from the rear property setback line, but 27.3 feet from the edge of wetland, which is a little unusual circumstance. The property line is actually closer to the back of the building than the edge of wetland is in that area. We don't need a side yard setback, Mr. Chairman, we do, we will meet the 15-foot side yard setback in the Town Center District. Also, we meet the 25-foot wetland buffer requirement, so we don't need any relief from that as well. The present conditions and the proposed conditions will meet that 25-foot setback requirement for the wetland buffer. Properties in the Town Center District and the C2 District, of course. The rear of the property, Mr. Chairman, behind it, it was the former pond, and as the Board well knows, when the dam was removed in 2008, that drained out the pond, so the pond doesn't exist anymore, but it's still a classified wetland behind this building. The addition would allow much more efficient operations for the, for the kitchen and the bakery, as I mentioned. The addition would be about 546 square feet, Mr. Chairman, overall. At its closest points, the built, the present building is about 29 feet from the edge of wetland and about 22.7 feet from the rear property line. So what this variance does is really only make the addition be two or three feet closer to both of those setbacks than the building presently exists anyway. So it's not a significant change into the 40-foot setback from what already exists. There will be closer points to the setback because of the addition, but the existing points in the existing rear of the building are already pretty much in the same, same distance from the back property line in the wetland than the addition itself is going to be. We, again, meet all the other criteria.
If you could, if, and no, and I thank you very much for the overview. If you could read into the five points into the record?
Sure.
We appreciate it, and we're just gonna, we'll stop after each, just in case there's any questions.
No problem. And if I, and so because of the length of the application, maybe I'll just paraphrase for simplicity, if that's okay.
If, if, yes, that, that should be fine.
I'll be faster, I think, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay.
So first, the first criteria, of course, is that the variance not be contrary to the public interest. And we respectfully submit, it's not contrary to the public interest to permit the applicant to expand the kitchen facilities of this existing bakery and cafe when the proposed addition will not be substantially closer to the rear property line or the edge of wetland than the existing structure already is. Again, the building already lies within both of these 40-foot setback requirements. The public interest is still served because we won't encroach on the 25-foot wetland buffer. We don't make any significant difference in what we already have in terms of building setback, only approximately two to three feet, as mentioned. And I'll paraphrase also, the, note the Conservation Commission's comment on this as well, because this is the appropriate point for it. The Conservation Commission, in its letter to you, Mr. Chairman, analyzed the circumstances that were presented to them for this very plan, and in their conclusion noted that by consensus, the Commission is in favor of this project, and thanks the Board, meaning you, for considering our recommendations. So the Conservation Commission concluded favorably for this proposal.
All right.
And if there are any questions on the first criteria.
I apologize, I'm just have, I'm gonna take a pause real quick. I apologize, I forgot to put this in the record. Lenny, it has nothing to do with my own personal, Lenny, it just reminded me that I hadn't seated him, because Lenny is an alternative. Just for the record, Lenny will be sitting in tonight for Fran, who is not, who is a member, who will not be here. Apologize.
Not a problem.
Just, you bully me, you want to vote against you. So I apologize for that.
I thought with Lenny's longstanding experience of the town that he was a permanent, permanent member and would never be taken from such a position, given his stature, so.
But, no, thank you. Is there any questions on the, on the first, on number one? No? All right. Number two, sir.
Thank you. The second criteria is the spirit of the ordinance be observed. We would respectfully submit it would be observed. Spirit of the ordinance promotes health, safety, welfare of the community. The Town Center District seeks a, encourages a mixture of land uses, it encourages, obviously, vitality in the Town Center itself. The rear yard setbacks, of course, seek to provide sufficient space between structures on neighboring properties, but we have, in this particular case, not a problem in that regard, because the property behind us is the former pond or wetland, so it's not a developed parcel, really frankly won't ever be a developed parcel. So we don't have that concern of a separation of structures that are, that's enhanced by having the setbacks. We don't have that issue. Also, since we meet the 25-foot wetland buffer requirement, we don't have a concern of violating that as well. So both in terms of space between us and our abutting property and in, and in being in compliance with the 25-foot wetland buffer, I think we're within the spirit of the ordinance.
Any questions? Tony? You can proceed.
Thank you. Third criteria is that granting the variance will do substantial justice, and of course I'm speaking as to both variances. And we would submit that permitting a reasonable expansion of this existing building, allowing modernization and upgrading of the kitchen and baking facility enables fostering of a vibrant business in the Town Center, which is the purpose of the Town Center to begin with, to have good vibrant businesses that can naturally expand as business needs permit. And I think it's substantial justice to allow this variance in that type of context. Just one other thought that I did mention in our application on substantial justice, Mr. Chairman, our, our State Supreme Court tried to define it in a case a number of years ago. It's always this sort of double negative definition, but in effect, what the Court said was that when the general public realizes no appreciable gain if the variance is denied, then substantial justice is given. So if denial of the variance is not any benefit to the public, then granting the variance does substantial justice, because it fosters the, the appropriate purpose, purpose of a, again, reasonable addition of an existing business in this case. Any questions on that, Mr. Chairman?
Lenny? Tony? Please proceed.
Thank you. The fourth criteria is that the value surrounding properties not be diminished. Again, just to note, our, our abutting properties are the fire station to our south, the pond, the former pond, which is owned by the Merrimack School District to the west, Buckley's Steakhouse, which is immediately to the north, and what abutting residential property that just touches the back corner, the back northwest corner of our property. Those are our abutters, but the three primary abutters are the fire station, the steakhouse, and the pond, and of course, the park across the street is technically an abutter, too. Given the nature of those abutters, adding a small addition to the firehouse side of this property is not going to adversely affect their property values. Again, additions show vitality in the business, modernization of the building, a sense of worth in the abutting property, and clearly not adverse to the fire station's value. Any questions on that, Mr. Chairman?
Questions? Questions?
Thank you.
Please proceed.
The last criteria, of course, is that of unnecessary hardship, and the standard, as the Board well knows, is owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance will, would result in unnecessary hardship, because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision, and, secondly, that the proposed use be reasonable. So we have this two-pronged test that we all have to deal with, and you've dealt with many, many times. The basic idea is you identify special conditions of the property, and then determine with those in mind whether the purpose of the ordinance overall is frustrated by the application of the setback requirements in this case. And we do have a number of special criteria that I mentioned in our application. The, first of all, it's, it's an existing lot in the Town Center Zone, about 0.4 acres. It, modest size, of course. We currently have an existing structure that's long-standing that does not meet the two 40-foot setback requirements, but we have room to add to it modestly in a way that doesn't adversely affect those requirements either, because of only the two or three-foot increased encroachment into the 40-foot setback. Our property's fixed in size, given our abutters, we can't expand. We can't expand it to accommodate more landmass to handle the setback requirements. We have the, the former pond in the back, which I think is a unique circumstance in that we don't have a structure behind us, so we don't have that issue of needing separation of structures from the rear setback requirement. And we have this oddball circumstance, very unique, where in some sense, the property line is closer to the building in the rear than the edge of wetland happens to be. So we put these factors on the table, analyze them against the purposes of the ordinance, and I think we come to the conclusion that if the 40-foot setback requirements remain imposed on this property to preclude this variance, they're not really fostering the general purpose of the ordinance. Because the general purposes of the ordinance are to encourage destit land use, encourage vitality in the Town Center area, in the case of setback requirements, allow proper separation between buildings, we don't have that concern as well. So if the provisions are imposed and the variance denied, then really not fostering the overall goals of the ordinance. And lastly, the proposed use, I think, is reasonable, because we're not changing the use of the structure, we're just trying to enhance the functionality of the bakery.
Are there any questions? All right.
Mr. Chairman, my only last point, and I'm happy to answer questions, of course, would be that in Jillian Harris's report to the Board, she had proposed one condition of approval if the Board so chose to approve the application, that dealt with the need, the consideration of site plan approval at the planning board level. We've had discussions with staff, and I would just respectfully submit, Mr. Chairman, that if, if a condition of, if the Board believes that this, that the variance should be granted, if a condition of approval is to be required, that, that it read in terms of, we either get site plan approval, waiver of site plan approval, or administrative approval at staff level, because I don't think it will necessarily have to go to full-blown site plan approval, given the really modest nature of this project.
And I'll confirm that we did have that discussion and that we hadn't yet determined which avenue would be most appropriate, so I would be okay with that revision to the recommended condition.
Okay. So we're just, if, if approved, that further discussion with Community Development Office to determine the right course of action for site plan or approval, or...
Administrative.
Administrative approval.
Administrative site plan approval or waiver of site plan approval. It could go one of any of those three.
Sure.
And I would just leave it to the staff to determine with us.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public portion of the hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for this petition? Is there anybody that would like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Discussion of the Board. Lenny? Questions, concerns, thoughts?
I don't see any big issues here. I don't see any big issues with the application. It's a common sense thing in the center of town. I believe in the Town Center, there should be zero lot lines anyways. That's beside the point.
I don't see any problems with it either.
So, can I have a motion? And when you read the motion, please read the motion for both case number 39 and 40. We're gonna do, just combine the two cases together, we're gonna vote on both cases combined. Do we have to vote on them separately? Okay. Sorry, we'll vote on them separately. So let me, let's start with case, with case 39, the first one, which is the 19.3 feet from the rear property line. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to variance under Section 2.02.13E4C of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 19.3 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 436 Daniel Webster Highway in C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Elderly and Town Center Overlay District Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 007, Case 2016-39.
With a condition?
With the condition, should the Board vote to, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, shall obtain a site plan approval for the planning board for the purpose of structure addition.
Actually amended, we're amending the condition to administrative approval.
Administrative approval.
On the...
Or waiver.
Or waiver. Second. All right. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? I'm seeing. It's 300. And can I have a motion on petition 40, or the next petition?
Mr. Chairman, variance under Section 202.7A6 of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional 27.3 feet from the edge of the wetland, whereas 40 feet is required. Parcel is located at 436 Daniel Webster Highway in C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Elderly and Town Center Overlay District Tax Map 5D-4, Lot 007, Case 2016-40, with the same, the same, what do you call it, condition as the previous one.
Second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? 300. Motion carries. There was one document that we couldn't unfortunately take tonight. I don't know if Community Development has it, if they don't, if you could get that to them for the record?
We did receive it.
Oh, you did?
I'm sorry that it wasn't included in the packets.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, good luck.
Remember, you got 30 days. You know, you could start building, but it's a 30-day grace period. Somebody comes up in 30 days and says, gee, I don't like how it's done. You guys gotta stop, but you could, you could start anytime you want. It's your preference. Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay. Thank you.
Have a good rest of the evening.
You, too.
You as well. Drive safe.
Happy Merry Christmas.
I will, I do, we'll do that. For the purpose of the next petition from ANMI Milford Realty, that the first petition is for the sale of new and used power sports equipment, and the second petition is for the service of power, repair, so I'm gonna do both petitions simultaneously, because obviously if they don't, gonna do the sales, can't do the repair, vice versa. So it seems, if that's okay with, who, if, are you representing AMI?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna combine the two petitions, so you can come down while I read these in and, and sign in. Just to, same advice, you have to get a three-way yes. If all three people don't approve, the petition will be denied. Okay? Or if only two approve and one doesn't, it's still, it'll be denied, so, okay. Just make sure your mic is lit up. I will read these in while you sign in. AM, next two petitions are for AM, ANMI Milford Realty LLC petitioner-owner, special exception under Section 2.02.3C1D of the zoning ordinance to permit the sale of new slash used powersport vehicles. The parcel is located at, located at 736 Milford Road in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection and 100-500-year flood hazard areas, Tax Map 2B, Lot 008, Case Number 201641. We'll also be hearing in conjunction with that, special exception under Section 2.02.3C1F of the zoning ordinance to permit the service and repair of powersport vehicles. This, this parcel is located at 736 Milford Road in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection and 100-500-year flood hazard areas, Tax Map 2B, Lot 008, Case Number 2016-42. Hi. So, well, how we'll proceed is, if you want to give a kind of a, kind of a quick overview of what you're looking to do, I will then need you to read in the, the five points as were outlined. I'm sorry, special exemption, I'll need you to read in the A, B, C, and D into the record, and we'll stop after each to just, if we have any questions. And we'll do the, we'll do the sale first, and then after that, and we'll do the, we'll do the repair. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. Sorry, hold one second.
Do you know if the applicant is aware of this?
Do you read this?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll read this into record. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. My name is Barry Eisenberg.
Can you check your light again on there? Make sure, sometimes it looks like it's lit and it's not. Just push, try pushing the button again.
Looks like it is. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, try that mic over there, see if that one works.
Is that on?
No, you gotta push the button. There you go. How about this? Oh, there we go. There, yeah, we got it. Good. All right, cool. Okay, sorry about that. Nope, not a problem.
My name is Barry Eisenberg. I'm the CEO of National Powersports, located at 319 Commerce Way in Pembroke, New Hampshire. We have come before you seeking special exception for the sale of powersports equipment and the service and repair of said powersports equipment. National Powersports is the largest seller of powersports on eBay in the world. We have a 52,000-square-foot state-of-the-art facility in Pembroke, and we've maximized our sales and are looking to expand, and we'd like to come down into the Merrimack area. We currently have Second Wind BMW and Triumph under agreement to purchase. We're scheduled to close within about 10 days. The facility is very small. It can't handle what we're looking to do. We are also a Triumph dealer in Pembroke. We're the largest... We're the largest Triumph dealer, highest volume Triumph dealer in the northeast segment of the United States. So it was a natural for us to pick up the Triumph franchise when we came down to this area. Our hopes are, once we take over, once we complete the purchase of Second Wind, are to find a larger location that can handle the volume that we expect to, to produce here in the Merrimack-Nashville area. Thus the, thus are looking at the property located at seven sixty Milford Road, or seven thirty-six Milford Road, I'm sorry. Shelley?
Yeah, why don't you start with A, B, C, and D, go through those, and just stop after each, you know, and, 'cause we, we very well have some questions for you.
Very good, sir. The specific site is an appropriate location for such use or use in terms of overall community development, because the proposed location, seven thirty-six Milford Road, is located and highly visible from Amherst Street, AKA Route one oh one A. There are currently major automobile dealerships in the area, including Volkswagen, Best Ford, Best Cycle, as well as RJ Cycles, and Second Wind BMW and Triumph, as well as numerous used car superstores. Our business complements those in the area. Additionally, we'll be creating up to thirty additional jobs in the area, as well as increasing the tax base, and cleaning up and inhabiting a currently vacant and rundown property.
Any question? Hi. Any questions? Tony? Lynn? Proceed.
The use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, because we are a recognized high-end retailer catering to the populace of this area. We do not engage in human services of any kind, controversial, or contested uses. National Powersports Distributors has been recognized by Business New Hampshire Magazine as a top family-owned business for three consecutive years.
Tony? Lynn? Lynn?
With regard to adversely affecting the neighborhood, I believe we've got wells in that area?
Yep, that is in a wellhead protection.
But Merrimack Val, Merrimack Village District does have wells in the area?
Yes, ma'am.
And where you're dealing with vehicles and fluids, et cetera, et cetera, have you considered this?
Absolutely, ma'am. We are, we don't even meet the criteria as a generator of hazardous or small universal waste. We are simply a user by the standards set by the state and the NHADA. We're subject and adhere to used oil management and universal waste programs. We studied practice, best management practices for groundwater protection, as covered in part ENV dash WQ four oh one of the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, developed by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. We've been operating in wetlands and aquifer in Pembroke area, and would gladly, the, the town officials and planners would gladly serve as reference and be happy to speak to the board regarding our stellar and exemplary performance. We will be processing the motorcycles as far as washing and servicing at our Pembroke location. As mentioned, we have fifty-two thousand square feet there. Thirty-two thousand are for showroom, twenty thousand square feet is for service and reconditioning of, of vehicles. In the location here in Merrimack, it's an eighty-five hundred square foot building, of which we'll use sixty-five hundred square feet for showroom display of motorcycles that are serviced and reconditioned in Pembroke, and then brought down to the Merrimack location. The additional two thousand square feet for service and repair of anything that might need it based on inspection or tire and so forth. I've got a, a list of, of items that we, we cover additionally in the packet that I've supplied you with. There are pictures of our service area. You'll see our chemicals such as oil and so forth. The criteria for storage outdoors is much more strict than indoors, but we practice the outdoor storage procedures indoors to further ensure that there, there are no mishaps and so forth.
Pat, I'm happy.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question.
In your service area, do you have any traps for the, just in case the oil gets on the ground? Do you have like a trap that goes, like a storage area that is, that goes in?
Drains.
Drains.
Well, we're required to have a separator for oil and water, which we have, but we are capping off all drains in this building. There are floor drains in, in Merrimack, and we're capping every one of them off. There'll be no active floor drains.
So what happens with spills?
They're, they're cleaned immediately, they're, they're addressed immediately. There's protocol and procedure in place. We have cleaning stations and so forth. Frankly, we've had no calls, no environmental calls in the fifteen years that we've been in business. We invite the NHADA in every year by invitation to look at our operation and assess it. We also have the town planners and the, the town administrators invited in every year to assess it, and we keep a very strict policy on how we handle ourselves.
Did you approach the Merrimack Village District?
We are on the commission, we're on the Conservation Commission hearing for Monday, December fifth, sir.
That's not the same. Merrimack, I'm a commissioner, Merrimack Village District Commissioner, and we're separate from the conservation.
Okay.
This is the water district in town.
This is the water district.
It's recommended that planning board approval be a condition, and they will have input into that process if that comes to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Satisfied, Tony?
Okay.
See? Thank you.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, because the property located at seven thirty-six Milford Road is setback off of Amherst Street with its main entrance at the light shared with connect, with the entrance to connection. The light intersects with Craftsman's Way to gain access to seven thirty-six Milford Road. One must turn onto the common entrance during the appropriate light, leaving the heavily trafficked Amherst Street.
And last one?
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use or uses because National Powersports uses a warehouse-style approach to display our vehicles. A complete interior gut of the seven thirty-six Milford Road will provide us with a rectangular showroom of roughly sixty-five hundred square feet and additional two thousand square feet for service towards the rear of the building. The property has fifty-five existing parking spaces sufficient to handle staff and customer base. All vehicles and services are kept inside the building with no outside storage required. The existing footprint has loading docks enabling loading.
Any questions? All right. As I had mentioned previously, we're gonna do petitions back-to-back since they're all, since we're looking for the sales and repairs, so we're gonna move to petition forty-two, and if you'd like to go through A, B, C, and D, and now this is, that, what we just heard was on sales, this is on the service and repair, so if you'd like to proceed with the next set of special criteria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I also point out, attached to each packet, there are color photograph copies. In the, in the sales one, the, the photographs are of our showroom. That's how we display our vehicles. I wanted to give you an idea of what it might look like in Merrimack, the type of display that we have. And in the second one, in sales, in the service, those pictures are of our service area, and there is a picture of the chemicals kept in the outdoor storage.
So you're, you're gonna gut the existing buildings, so you're not gonna have that ceiling height?
That's correct, sir. We're, we're gonna take out the dropped ceiling.
Oh, so you're gonna have, what, about ten-foot ceilings?
I believe they're twelve.
Twelve?
Yes, sir. But we are taking out the dropped ceilings.
Okay, so, but you're not, so you're not rebuilding a whole warehouse like you have up, where you're, you're just gutting what you have there?
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
Correct. The existing ceilings above the drop ceilings look very much like the-
Oh, okay.
The, very much like that. So the special exception calls for gasoline automobile. We have no interest in selling gasoline or, or dealing with that, simply repair of the powersports vehicles that we sell, and as an inspection station. A, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use in terms of overall community development, because the proposed location, seven thirty-six Milford Road, is located and highly visible from Amherst Street, AKA Route one oh one A. There are currently major automobile dealerships in the area, including Volkswagen, Best Ford, Best Cycle, as well as RJ's, Second Wind BMW and Triumph, as well as numerous used car superstores. Our business complements those in the area. Additionally, we'll be creating up to thirty additional jobs in the area, as well as increasing the tax base, cleaning up and inhabiting a currently vacant and rundown property. Service and repair of vehicles complements the sale of new and used vehicles. We have applied for the special exception as well.
Any questions, Tony? Please proceed.
The use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, because we are recognized high-end retailer catering to the populace of the area. We do not engage in human services of any kind, controversial, or contested uses. National Powersports Distributors has been recognized by Business New Hampshire Magazine as a top family-owned business for three consecutive years.
Proceed.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians, because the vehicle, the property located at seven thirty-six Milford Road is setback off of Amherst Street with its main entrance on the light shared with the entrance to connection. This light intersects with Craftsman's Way to gain access to seven thirty-six Milford Road. One must turn onto the common entrance during the appropriate light, leaving the heavily trafficked Amherst Street. National Powersports adheres to strict safety guidelines suggested by the NHADA, as well as our own proprietary safety certifications. That include moving motorcycles, forklift operations and loading, tying down motorcycles. All materials kept for repairs and services are kept in defined areas and monitored daily for proper handling.
I actually have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Being a motorcyclist myself, you get, you start doing some custom jobs, pipes, a lot of Harleys, there's a noise. I mean, what, I, I'm not from, I know National Powersports, but I've never been to the Pembroke facility, so I, I don't know what the, what the people are around it. That being said, how is that handled, or have you, have you addressed that, or have you had, 'cause there are certain noise levels, decibel levels that can be had. I know people that have had loud pipes and gotten pulled over by police and-
Of course.
-have gotten in trouble, so how do you deal with that at, at National Powersports?
Well, one of the, one of the licenses that we have applied for is an inspection station license. The decibel rating for motorcycles is ninety-six. So if, if a motorcycle produces ninety-six or less decibels, it passes inspection, over ninety-six it does not. So we will put appropriate stickers on motorcycles that pass, and, and we won't sticker motorcycles that don't. As far as, I, I'm, I wanna answer your question, I'm not certain if you're asking, of course we don't have any control of, of people who pull in or might be driving down the road. We're not servicing or running motorcycles outside. Any motorcycle that is in the exterior of the building has been delivered to a customer for sale or after service. It's been getting back to the, to the customer.
Okay. I, I guess, I guess, I guess what I was asking is, I know, I know RJ's has a RPM-
A dyno machine.
Dyno machine. Yes. That's what I was thinking of. And I've seen it at Bike Week and all that, so I'm just, I'm curious if you're gonna be doing something similar to that-
No, sir.
-at National Powersports.
No, sir. We don't, we don't have a dyno machine in Pembroke, we don't plan on getting one. We don't plan on a dyno machine in Merrimack. Dyno machines are basically used for performance tuning on motorcycles, and you, you put the motorcycle through all the gears at a very high RPM, it does create a lot of noise. In servicing motorcycles, you have to run them, they have to be test ridden, so-
Of course.
-they will be, they will be ridden outside by certified and licensed technicians, but we're, we're very careful and cognizant and contributing to, we, we wanna be part of the, the answer to the neighborhood and, and not an attraction to the neighborhood.
It was more, more about the dyno was what I was, 'cause-
Yeah.
-I've seen it, I've seen it in action, it's, it gets loud.
It's, it's, it's very loud. It's, it's very loud, yeah, we have, we have no, no interest.
Okay.
Do you do custom pipes?
By custom pipes, ma'am, other than, than original equipment by the manufacturer?
Correct. So if, for instance, I bring my bike in-
Mm-hmm.
And I've got the license, and I want something that's louder than your ninety-six, you may not inspect it, you may not give me a sticker for it, but would you be willing to do the, the customization on the pipes?
As long as, as long as it's not illegal, we won't, we won't engage in any illegal or immoral activity. If someone comes in and wants, the pipes that we sell are mainstream pipes that are sold through Takaraki, Powersports Unlimited, cataloged type things. We don't drill out baffles.
Okay.
We-
Yeah, that was, that was, that was what I was-
Yeah, we, we just sold a, I was, at one point in my career, I was the manager of Boston Harley-Davidson, and we became a Thunder Mountain dealer. And Thunder Mountain was an offshoot of Harley-Davidson, where they made custom choppers in Colorado and, out of Harley-Davidson parts. And we just had a beautiful Thunder Mountain for sale on the floor. It was stock, and the customer bought it and asked us to, it wasn't loud enough for him, and he asked us to drill out the baffles. The answer was no. However, if he wanted to purchase a set of Vansenheim pipes from a catalog that were mainstream or that he could get from a Harley dealer, or, or something that was like that, or Reinhardt pipes, or Bubbs, or things like that, we'd be more than happy to install them. But we do not engage in drilling out baffles.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Dee?
Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use or uses, because a complete interior gut of seven thirty-six Milford Road will provide us with a rectangular showroom of roughly sixty-five hundred square feet and additional two thousand square feet for service towards the rear of the building. The property has fifty-five existing parking spaces sufficient to handle staff and customer base. All vehicles and services are kept inside the building with no outside storage required. The existing footprint has loading docks enable loading. A service center complete with service desk and individual lifts for up to six technicians is being built as part of the building rehab. Professional vendors such as Safety Clean are contracted for proper disposal of used oils.
Any questions? Okay. Are there any questions? Sir?
You store oil there, right?
We, the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's a-
You do store oil, oil there for the, for the motorcycles?
Uh, for oil changes.
Oil changes.
Yes, and for retail, uh, small quartz for retail sales.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And included, there is a, there is a picture of our oil storage, and-
I'm sorry.
Okay, and as, as mentioned, that, that type of storage is required for outdoor, which is so that if oil hits an impervious surface, it, it stops from hitting the impervious, and it was required for outdoor, but we employ it for indoor throughout. We've also, at our Pembroke facility, we gave a great deal of thought and put a lot of care into building a twenty-five thousand dollar wash bay for reconditioning the motorcycles, which includes recapturing dirt, grime, grease down to five microns, far exceeding any government level. And that's what we wanted to do, to protect our neighbors, the environment, and the facility. So we take extreme measures and are very proud of that, in making sure that we care for any oils or any materials. And once again, I, I do wanna mention that the state has levels that classify you as a handler or a, a generator of waste. We don't, we're not at the level of qualifying for either. So the, the handler of universal waste, universal waste are things like light bulbs, rechargeable batteries, things like that. We're a handler of, of waste, that's all that we've qualified for. We don't handle enough at our fifty-two thousand square foot facility with a thousand motorcycles on the floor as we speak right now. We don't qualify to be a generator, so, and this is a much smaller, this is, we're looking for this to be an annex, really, of, of what we do.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Question on, you mentioned the drains that are there now.
Yes, ma'am.
Do those currently exit into the, the sewer system or the septic system? I understand there's a private septic system that you're connected to.
We've inspected them as much as we can, we, we've brought in professionals and plumbers and asked that question, and our bids include capping off every drain in the building.
But they currently-
They currently are, I, I, as far as we know- They currently are. As far as we know, we haven't
Okay. But you're planning on sealing them so that they do not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. We don't hose down any floors. We... That's not how we
I just wanted to make sure that the drains were being sealed and not
Yes.
Funneled into... Thank you.
We have no interest in using them at all.
Unless there's any other questions? All right. I do have something to read in. I'm going to open the public hearing before I read this in. I want to open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for this petition? Does anybody like to speak against this petition? Have you been sworn in, ma'am? Could you please stand? Raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God? All right, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and just sign in, you can take a seat over there. Just make sure the green light's on and then state your name after you sign in, please. Thank you. While you do that, I'm going to read this into the record. So... Actually, you know what? I'll just wait. If you could just make sure the green light's on, state your name and
My name is Patricia Pansyako, and the green light's on. Can you hear me?
Bring it a little bit closer to you.
Is that better?
Slide it closer to you. And make sure sometimes the green light looks like it's on.
Is that better?
Uh, yeah, we got you. All right.
I will do that. My name is Patricia Pansyako, and I'm an attorney here on behalf of G&amp;H Post LLC.
Okay.
And I sent a letter in asking the board if we could continue this matter. I was just handed this yesterday. And forgive me if I'm not completely up to speed on all the facts, but I think I have enough. Whoops.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you swap mics? Just pull that one over. I apologize.
Both. Oh, my.
There you go. There you go.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. I was asked to look at this matter by G&amp;H Post by... Because there are butters to the property. Now, what I've brought with me is a couple of diagrams, just so that if I could approach and share these with you.
Fortunately, we can't take paperwork on the day of the meeting.
Well, you don't have to keep it. It'll help you orient
Describe it.
Okay. This property is located on the other... Well, opposite Craftsman Lane in Boston Post Road.
Okay.
And across the little access road on the other side is a large building that most people know as PC Connections. Big operation, big parcel. Now, G&amp;H owns the parcel on which PC Connection building is located. Now, to give you a little bit of history of the property, and I believe Member Christensen, she touched upon the issue of why I'm here. Back in the early eighties, this area was developed as a large shopping center. It was owned by Amherst Street Realty Trust.
It was a market basket.
Yeah, supermarket, who knows what. But anyway, it was developed, and the Amherst Street Realty Trust owned the large parcel owned by my client now, as well as the parcel that's subject matter of this application. So they had the shopping center developed. They installed a large chamber septic system underneath the pavement when that shopping center was developed. But within a couple of years, before the shopping center actually opened, they actually had the opportunity to tie into the sewer. So the chamber systems were never operated, and there is, and I've got a representative of G&amp;H here to explain the more technical aspects of this system to you. There was this storage made available. And as Ms. Christensen mentioned, it is a private sewer system. And at that time, the Realty Trust owned both parcels. So they connected the parcel that's the subject of this application, and life went on. The storage came out of all the parcels that were in there, is pumped outward towards Route 101A and down to the main by the McDonald's. In nineteen ninety-four, National Life Insurance, who financed the project, accepted a deed in lieu from Amherst Street Realty Trust for all the land. They sold this two-acre parcel to 736 Milford Road LLC. And it was three years later, the larger parcel, the PC Connection, is located on, was sold to G&amp;H Post. Nobody ever thought to give any kind of consideration to where the wastewater went. And this system is a private system. Now, when G&amp;H first took over, there was a real problem because this site was operated as a restaurant. There was no grease separator, nothing like that. Then they had the apple pie place in there. That caused an awful lot of trouble, and the gentleman I have with me, Robert Pratt, can speak more specifically to that. Now, the building has been empty for three years. This is, again, a private system. There are no easements at all to permit the pipes to be used connecting to this system to service another property. And G&amp;H is not willing to let any other entity own this property and be sending storage to their pump chambers, again, because of past problems that they have had. So in reality, at this present time today, and I don't know what would happen in the future, this property has no wastewater system. Because not only does it not have the right to connect to the private sewer system on my client's property, there's been no perk tests or any exploration even out there to confirm that you could put a septic system there. So, long story short, that's the basis for our objection. And if you would indulge us for a moment, I would like to have Mr. Pratt, who has operated this property, was there, has been there for a very long time, and he's got some details he would like to share with the board about the operation of this private system and why this position is being taken.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Jillian? How does that affect the property if there is... If GH Post basically won't let them use their sewer? They're capped. He's... The petitioner said he's capping anything, so there's not going to be any, other than the own personal toilets that the staff is going to use.
It sounds like there are legal matters that need further research, to me, before any type of decision could be made. Not sure if that's at this level or the planning board level, but it's definitely something that would need more research.
Were you aware of this when you looked at the property? Or were you told this by the real estate? You're going to probably need a mic to speak into. I'm sorry. I don't mean to
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
No, we were... Up until this moment are not aware. We're just under the assumption that we would be delivered a clean title. And of course, it's one of the provisions of the purchase
Right.
Is that we would have a clean title. I was prepared to address the... Not that provision so much as... Although it's a surprise, and we would have to look into it, and it is, as Ms. Harris has mentioned, certainly a legality that would have to be cleared up before we would move forward on it. But I was prepared to address the reason why counsel has asked for a delay in this.
Yeah, because I mean, as far as moving forward to do any petition approval at this point, I think you're going to want to make sure, for your own peace of mind in your business, and like I said, I'm familiar with your business, I think you want to make sure you've got a clean title and that you're not going to... Because, you know, if it's a situation, and if you allow me just a moment from the board, if it's a situation where you're going to have to put in your own sewer, that's going to be very costly.
Of course.
So I would imagine that you're going to want to probably research that a little more, because it sounds like this is the first year hearing of it as well.
It is the first we're hearing of it. It's a little bit of a convoluted situation. We would hope that there would... We would be very disappointed to learn of any disingenuous behavior by any members that would oppose us at all.
Right.
We are aware that G&amp;H is currently trying to purchase this property also. So the delay, the ask for delay in bringing this at the midnight hour, to us, appears to be a little self-serving to either arrest or completely eliminate us as potential buyers and any momentum we may have to just continue our due diligence and see if this is the right property for us.
Tony?
Oh, you said legal. You mean us?
No.
Or the
No, between the owner of the property and Power Sports.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have the ability to continue this to a following meeting, or do we need to make a decision on this tonight?
No, it's certainly the board's decision to continue or to make a decision tonight.
And the other piece of this, I feel like we're starting to encroach on planning board topics, and I'm thinking that this is more planning board than ZBA issue that's come up?
The sewage part. The not licensing of the sewage. I'm just curious, if you choose not to push for a continuance, if the petitioner moves forward, purchases the property, I'm asking, and then maybe your own planning, and maybe you can assess, they choose to put in their own sewer, does that solve the problem, right? In essence? Am I wrong?
I would think so, but
That would be something that you'd have to make that
That's what I'm saying. I don't think that issue is on this table.
Right.
I believe that's on
And I'm not saying this is an issue. I'm just saying for the petitioner, this coming up at this moment, the petitioner has the, you know, just
But that's why I'm saying, I'm wondering where we make our decision based on what our criteria is tonight, or whether we continue it. I'm just
So if we do a continuation, you're going to be doing this upon, for more information from legal, planning, community?
I'm not sure that this is relevant to ZBA.
I agree.
Although it may be relevant to planning board.
And so if the petitions are approved this evening, my understanding is that the next step is that this goes to planning board?
Correct. Then the planning board would ensure that they had adequate sewage facilities before they would approve any site plan.
So, understanding what you're saying, I'm sorry, did you have a question before?
I did. I had one thought on this.
Yes.
One of your criteria is adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use or uses. I would say that one of the facilities is wastewater. You can't even get a lot approved for subdivision without a perk test. And we have no idea what the soils are out there. So before you can even make a determination that there are adequate facilities, we have to prove this is a legal lot, and it can accommodate some type of wastewater facility, whether it be municipal sewer or a septic system. And I don't have the answer to that.
And that's actually the privy of the planning board?
Right.
I understand what you're saying, and that does fit in with the criteria, and I appreciate you bringing that up. The whole sewer issue, that's planning board, but I do recognize what you're saying from that perspective.
And one last comment. We only learned of this today. So there is no intent on G&amp;H's behalf to appear here tonight to subvert another person's contract to buy a property. And had we not looked into this more carefully, this poor man would have found it out the hard way after he bought the property. That is why we're here tonight. There is no easement on record for a sewer to tie into this property into the systems on my client's property.
Jillian, is there a butter notification?
Certainly.
And when did that go out?
It should have been two weeks before it was posted.
So somebody at G&amp;H maybe didn't open the mail, but it was sent out?
Yeah, because our community development does... Yeah, can you raise... Sort of tell the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God? If you could come in and sign in, please. You can stay over here.
November seventeenth is the date that it went out.
Okay.
What's the date?
November seventeenth.
We received this.
Identify yourself.
My name is Robert Pratt.
Thank you.
I'm the authorized owner rep for G&amp;H Post LLC. In my capacity, I am very familiar with the operation of the facility and with the premises. We received the notice from the community development department, and it was received on the seventh... Excuse me, it was postmarked on the seventeenth, and we received it on the nineteenth. When we received this, I did call in to the community development department to get a better understanding of this, and also because I was unfamiliar with the period of notification. The ZBA was told there's five days, planning board has ten days. I think what this actually fell into, not including the holidays, but assuming a working day last Wednesday and last Friday, it fell into that period. So it was a clean notice to us. Unfortunately, when we started to get professional services to come in and to help you out with something like this, or the more legal, through a holiday period, it's a little challenging. So that's why we just involved the attorney this beginning of this week. It was the first opportunity that we had to reach out for professional services.
I have no problem with that. But your attorney stated, "We only learned of this today."
We being
And I just wanted to clarify that appropriate notice was done legally, and it was there, and this was not a last-minute, "Oh, by the way." So just to clarify that comment on attorney's part.
And if I can add to that a little bit?
I understand the holidays and everything that goes on, but I wanted to clarify that one comment that was made.
That's fine. That's fine. One of the things that, you know, we're concerned about with something like this is that when there is a special exception that's sought out, and you seem to have, you know, the applicant seems to have an admirable track record and a process in place. But that said, you're looking to grant a special exception and then follow with the planning board to give a change in use. And let's just assume that it's granted for this particular application. At some point in the future, if this company is acquired, somebody else comes in and takes it, they're still going to be operating under that particular use, but they may not be operating with the same level of finesse and expertise that this gentleman is going to operate the facility at. So there are a lot of things that we take in good faith, and that's right in business, in that we have somebody that's going to operate effectively. They're going to follow all the rules, go above and beyond the rules. But we can't be assured that the next person is coming But we can't be assured that the next person is coming in and is operating under that same...
And we, we can't speak to that. I mean, because honestly, it's, I mean, we can talk hypotheticals from now until midnight. And me, so I, I understand where you're going with that, um, but I can't speak to what could be, we're speaking to what is now. And what is now is we're looking at this particular petition, and some points were definitely brought up for discussion for the board, um, regarding the usage of the, the sewer. But again, we're looking at use of the property, i- 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 special exception use is in regard to zoning. The, 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 the septic, I, I can't stress enough, that is really not our jurisdiction. And it, that's just not an area that we, we, we focus in. If this petition is approved, it does go before planning board, and then, then they would be discussing sewage and how that would be taken care of, whether it is a tie-in or whether there's some sort of agreement made, and it's tying in and using the existing, or if the petitioner is in an, and, and at this point, I'm stepping out of my previous zoning chair and saying that this is, that's a discussion for planning board as far as what the next steps are. Okay? We're, we're, and, and so I understand what you're saying, and a good point was brought up about, you know, about the property regarding the special exception, and that's something to definitely take into consideration. But, um, as far as future use or, or, or the sewage, that's, that's, really, that's all, it's all planning. We're looking at just the, the viability of doing this business at this location, and that, and that, and that's it, based on our zoning ordinances.
Understood.
So, just wanted to make sure that we're, we're not getting off track in talking about sewage and other things, and what could be, and where, where, where things could go.
And the reason I was going down that path, and it falls back to what our attorney had mentioned, is that it is our understanding that the zoning board has, excuse me, the ZBA, has four different criteria that must be met for somebody to grant a special exception.
Understandable.
And it clearly states that it have to have adequate infrastructure, adequate facility to be able to operate that system.
And in light of the information you've given us, yes...
It does not exist, so I don't understand how it could possibly be granted at this point.
Well, that, 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 that's, that's, I understand what you're saying, and, and that's in record. We, that's something that we, we need to discuss, and obviously, that's just been brought to light to us.
Okay. If I could clarify something that Ms. Christensen had, had mentioned also, about the subs, the, uh, the floor drains and the subsurface treatment of fluids that go into that. Why, what I can attest to from our experience is that those floor drains are connected directly to the septic system without exception. There's a number of them over there, and I can give you a very blunt reason as to how we know that. You know, throughout the process, you know, the, uh, of, of us being neighbors with, with, uh, with New England Apple Pie, and very accommodating, very respectful, very decent people to work with. We started to have a problem with our pump station. The way the system works, Mile High Apple Pie has a gravity feed system that goes down in front of what used to be the theater, comes across, and it ties into our septic line before it goes into distribution tanks and into a, into a, into a, a sump pit. Well, what we were finding was that in our sump pit, we had, I'll call them flour dumplings. Every day, they would pressure wash the floor in Mile High Apple Pie. In doing so, the byproducts washed down the drains. Literally, in our sump pit, it became dumplings. We then called in the, uh, the sewer department to see what, you know, what we, we could do about this. They then inspected Mile High Apple Pie and found that, see, there was never a grease, there was never a grease trap installed. So, everything goes directly in, so we know by, by default that everything comes down there.
I assume that they did.
Right.
Yeah. What we, what, what we would ask is, in the event that there is a special exception granted, and ultimately a change in use, is that there be consideration to make sure that they isolate, not just seal, but remove the piping, uh, below the slab that goes into that. The reason that we say that is we never know in the future what's gonna happen.
Again, again, that's, that's, that's a planning board issue.
And, yeah, and, and again...
And I can appreciate that.
Yeah, I can, yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. That's, and I agree with Ms. Christensen. That is, that is, you, that would be something, again, if approved, would go, that I would be, I would highly recommend having that conversation with the planning board, um, regarding that.
And on a similar basis, we have concerns because it is an aquifer. There is a history of contamination within the area with, with former Merrimack Industrial Metals, uh, property, uh, that, uh, that's gone through, as you guys are aware, that's gone through a Brownsfield Act, uh, and there's, uh, there's been some treatment, limited treatment or of a, of a removal of surface contaminants and, and then a capping of it through efforts by the EPA in recent years. But nonetheless, that area has been subject to considerable contamination. We're very concerned, as the town was when Home Depot went in and so on, that any unintended contaminants are going to appear, have the potential, not that they're going to, but they have the potential to, to, uh, to occur within that area, not only, because that, that, the, 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 uh, subsurface area in that is kind of like a flour sand or sugar sand. We don't want that to diminish the quality of water for the town, we don't want that to diminish the value of our property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, the letter I was gonna read in was from your firms. In light of all of that, is there anything you wanted to add or say?
If, if, if I may respond.
Please.
Chairman, thank you, thank you. And I enjoy spirited discussion, and I, I very much appreciate where G and H is, uh, coming from with regards to caring whether or not we, we make a sound investment, uh, just finding out about the, the sewer. We certainly, um, will do our due diligence and would not get into a, uh, business, uh, dealing with a property without adequate facilities, resources, and so forth.
Sure.
We, we very much pride ourselves on the world-class operation that we run and are going to continue to do so, whether it be at seven thirty-six Milford Road or another location, should it, should it come to be. Uh, we've identified that location as a very viable spot to, to do business, and that's why we're before you today. Thank you for pointing out that the future users, we, nobody can control.
Exactly.
Acts of war, God, we can't control. The, the sewer rights were never mentioned in this letter, that wasn't dated today by council, with all due respect, was dated Monday. So, they, they didn't hear about it today, it was Monday that they heard about it.
Let's, let, let's, let's...
Let's let that go.
No, 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 let's, that's, that's, we're past that.
I, I was prepared to talk about the certain, certain of the chemicals commonly used with the uses proposed may adversely impact those private facilities as well as G and H, was the reason council put in here for wanting to delay this. Uh, there's been no contact by G and H regarding wanting to know what we use, what we do, uh, no conversation. Uh, we do not use chemicals, adverse chemicals. As I mentioned, we are not a generator of hazardous waste, we're, we're simply a small quantity handler of universal waste. So, I wanted to point that out. Sewer rights, I, I, I just can't address too because it's a surprise to me.
Mm-hmm.
But certainly, um, at the planning board stage, uh, it would, uh, it's gonna come up, and, and we may not even go to planning board if we find out that it's not viable. Um, we're here seeking spec, special exception.
I understand.
Okay. We have, have mentioned that we will cap all drains, that we don't plan on using them. We don't pressure wash, uh, floors, and we don't use flour, uh, in, in any case, for any reason.
Yep.
Uh, so that won't be an issue. I've, I've gone around the property to make sure, uh, that it has a six-inch curbing all around the property, because I'm very concerned, uh, one of the, our concerns is that, um, vehicles entering the property, whether it be customers or staff, the, any, any runoff of, of, um, liquid from, from their vehicles, uh, we're, we're concerned about where that goes, especially being near wetland. It's one of the considerations that, that we give. Um, I, I know the property adjacent to us, G A, G and H Post has seven hundred and eighty-three parking spaces, and when they're full, uh, or even half-full, the, the amount of liquid gasoline and oil and antifreeze and coolant in those vehicles far exceeds anything that we may have on our property over a ten-year basis. So, I, I just wanna point these things out to the board respectfully, that we're, we're very caring and careful, and at this point, we're, we're simply trying to identify whether this is a viable property, uh, that we can go. The next step, as I understand, is the conservation commission, which we're on on the fifth. And then from there, we would put an application into the planning board if we felt that, in lieu of what we've, we've heard tonight, that it's still a viable property.
Let me ask you this. Seeing is, you, you kinda just found out the sewage thing. See, and, and, uh, and you've, you have made, I know it's planning board, I, I just, what I, she was gonna say, we can close out the public hearing, we can deliberate. It's still, where there's four people, you still need to get unanimous, um, or, 'cause if you don't, it's, 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 it's a done, it's done.
I understand.
Which I explained when we had three, even when we have four, you still have to be unanimous. So, if two vote yes, two vote no, you still, it's, it's dead. My question to you, and I'm not getting into playing, hey, but the, my question to you is, do you want to further, do you want us to move forward and discuss and make a judgment tonight, or do you want to speak with your real estate attorney's site plan and further investigate the sewage thing before? Because I don't want, I, I, 'cause I, again, I don't wanna make a vote on this, and if it doesn't go your way, it's, you know, you have to, you know, you gotta come up with grounds for appeal. Like, you know, do you want to investigate the sewage issue, and what's been brought up in, at, at the eleventh hour, so to speak? Do you wanna be, do you wanna, do you investigate this before moving forward with the zoning, with the zoning board making a call on these special exceptions?
Uh, thank you for, for asking, um, chairman, and, and I'll, I can only answer, um, this way, that I know at the, our business is a seasonal business. We're greatly affected financially, uh, business level, income level, the staffing level, the jobs and so forth, by the seasons here in New England. Putting off the decision and re, coming before the board again, or moving it so that we don't see the planning board, should we choose to go to planning board into January, uh, would, would certainly affect the, the financial aspects of the business. Uh, if we move forward with this building, and it's a big if right now, based on what I've, I've heard today, um, we would want to capture the spring market, we would wanna renovate the building and be open for the March, April period.
Of course.
Delaying, uh, thirty, sixty days would put us into May, June, uh, and it's, it's a very sensitive business, uh, because of the season, just because motorcycles...
I, I will tell you that planning board has limited meetings in December, and...
We're past the December meeting.
Correct.
Right.
I, I didn't submit, I, I've got a planning board application filled out, I did not submit it purposely so that I could come to this meeting first. We did get on the conservation hearing, and quite frankly, if, if we find that, um, and we'll look into this very quickly, uh, we would withdraw from the conservation hearing if we found that...
It doesn't sound like you'd get in front of a planning board till January, by the sound of it.
Right.
Right. So, what I don't wanna, I, I know that the deadline for the, um, January hearing is late, uh, late December, I have the date somewhere, but I, what I don't wanna do is, is miss if, if I...
But, but if you delayed tonight and you continued, you would go into the December...
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth meeting, which would still enable you to go before the planning board in January.
Because even, because i- i- if you, and, and to tick, to her point, I didn't, I didn't, this is what I wanna make clear, and make sure you understand, is if you go, you wouldn't be able until planning, if, if, if the petition was approved here, if conservation checked off on it, and plant, you, the, and planning board in January should check off on it, then you would not really be able to start, you're not gonna be able to start anything until Feb, late January, February at the earliest. So, when I'm, and, and that's why I'm offering that opportunity, if you wanna do the continuation to the December thirtieth meeting, to look into this further, to make sure that it's a viable property and not waste your time and, and, and money. I, I'm, I'm, that's why I'm, I'm kinda offering that to you, is, you know, and, and...
Offer, offer a recommendation.
Well, the other thing is, is if you don't get a four oh decision tonight, if you go forward tonight and you don't get a four oh decision, then you're even further behind the, the eight ball.
Sure, and, and I, I guess, um...
We're just trying to...
Well, I understand, and, and I, and I thank you for it. I, I, no one wants to waste anybody's time, and I, I don't wanna waste the, this, this board's time, for certain. Um, and I, I don't know if there's any, um, if, if we found out that there was no, that indeed there was no sewage, okay, as, as stated tonight, and, and there's been no, no solid proof given.
Right.
I don't know if there is, there isn't.
Right.
It was a Bonanza restaurant, it was the pie shop.
Right, right.
The place operated for decades.
Right.
Okay, so, I don't know, and we don't know.
Right.
We have to find that out. So, if, if there's not, um, is it viable to do a septic, um, geez, um, we would prefer not to do anything with a, with a septic system, to, to dig a septic system. Um, I, I don't, I don't think that would be advantageous for, uh, the business or the community, um, especially near wetlands or, or aquifer. So, if I put that issue aside, if I just move it aside and say, that's really what's going to, um, that hinge is gonna let us know whether or not we move forward to something else, um, does the planning board believe, or will they, will they, what will be the difference between their decision today or their decision later? If, if I said there was, yes, we're gonna use a septic system?
That's something you gotta discuss with them, I'm just...
Right.
Oh, no, I meant, I meant this, I meant, I'm sorry, not the planning board, I, I apologize, sir, the ZBA. Would there be, because it's a planning board issue, is there any criteria that...
We're just giving, we're, all, all we're simply doing, Lenny, I'll let you go on the side, all right, go ahead, excellent, now. Uh, actually, did you, what did you, did you wanna bring something up? Okay, go ahead.
We have the authority to postpone this vote on our own.
Right.
If we feel that we want more information. And I've been racking my archives, and I can't physically picture all of what the sewer lines in that area are, and I don't have any plans here, so I can't review them. I don't understand how we're gonna private sewer line serving two individual properties, I think it's a mess.
But that's, but that's not an issue for ZBA.
Then again, that's, and that's planning, and I, so I understand what you're saying. So, you're saying that we could continue, I, I, you're making the point that we can make the continuation ourselves.
We have the right to continue it on our own.
We, we can, but again, we're, what Lenny's talking about is a planning issue, we're talking about whether we wanna make a special exception for this use, regardless of the property itself and the planning board issues that will come up with the property, is do we want to approve whether this is an appropriate special exception that we wanna grant?
So, all I'm simplifying, to kinda, 'cause instead of keeping us here till the wee hours in the morning, is that I'm, do, if you, regardless of sewer or where the waste goes, 'cause that's planning board, do you want us to deliberate and make a decision, knowing where you need to stand?
Tonight.
To get tonight, or do you want a continuation? And I'm, I'm, I'm off, I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm not advising, I'm not, I'm just giving you the chance to have that choice. If, if you say, you know what, I want a decision tonight, then I will close up the public hearing and we'll deliberate. If you wanted to say, you know what, I wanna take a closer look at this, and I wanna, I, I wanna, 'cause some things have come to light, and I wanna make sure this is a viable place for my business, for my family business to be, then I can understand that, and we can get you into the December thirtieth time zone. That's all, and nothing on sewer, just literally, just literally offering you that, that, that choice before we go to the next step.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I understand.
Understanding you need the four oh vote.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes.
Three, I just wanna clarify that, it's three.
Three oh.
Three unanimous.
I'm sorry.
Lenny?
Another thought. Okay, let's say we vote, we approve, the butter, after a rehearing, that's December, to just to decide whether or not you're gonna have the rehearing. The rehearing would then be in January, correct? That's two months down the road, right there.
All right, well, let's, let's, again, we're not, we're dealing with the here and the now, I'm not dealing with future timelines. I understand what you're saying, I thank you.
So, in answer to your question, Mr. Chairman, um, I, knowing that the, the sewage issue and so forth is a planning board issue, I guess, um... and so forth is a planning board issue, I guess, um, it would be in order for me to even think about going forward and, and, uh, i- if the board voted no, well, it's no, it's, it's a mute issue. I'm not going to, I'm not going to look any further. Uh, if the vor, if the board voted in our favor, then we would do the due diligence required to see if, if indeed there was sewage access, if, and so forth, and would act accordingly. So, um, in, in all respect of, of the time that you've, you've given tonight, and I thank you very much for that, um, I, I've stated, uh, who we are and what we would like to do there. And I'll leave it in your hands and would very much appreciate, uh, your vote to let us know if you feel that that is a, um, a, a special exception would allow us to operate if we had everything else in line. And, and that follows this. So, so I, I would look for this decision first.
All right. Um, do you have anything you'd like to add before I close the public hearing?
Just one comment. Um, as to the statement made earlier that we learned about it today, it was today that I researched the title, that I learned there was no sewer reason. I did send a letter to continue on Monday because we know there is sewer and we were acting on the assumption that there was rights to use the sewer. But the more I thought about it after I sent the letter, because, um, the planning department said, got to get it in here right away. So I did that. And the more I thought about it, I said, there's got to be something in the registry on this. And that's when I discovered this morning, there wasn't anything. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
All right. Thank you. So anybody else that'd like to speak for or against this? Chris? Uh, nevermind. Um, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, before any motions are made, I, I do want to discuss. Um, it was brought up that D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation of the proposed uses. And I do take into consideration what was said about the sewage, and they're not wanting to share that sewage with, um, someone up there. The fact is, that was her.
No.
Do I stop the person in record?
I would leave that up to her.
Do you want this right into record? I'm apologizing.
Uh, no, I don't really...
Okay. Thank you. Given the current picture, snapshot, not future, not what's come or what will come, it seems that facility has adequate, it meets that adequate. And I, I recognize that that's being said, but right now, I've got to believe, I'm not physically there, if I go there and I flush the toilet, the toilet's going to drain into the sewage system that is shared. So there is a sewage line there. Whether or not, now, it has been said that they will cap it. Um, and, you know, that, at that point, I, 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 based on the snapshot, there does seem to be adequate and appropriate facilities, um, there. So that's my two cents on it. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything. Tony? Lynn? Lenny?
I have seven left.
Can I have a motion? And if you're making a motion, please motion on both 41 and 42 as we are hearing them both. Actually, no, we're going to do them separately. If, so can I have a motion on case number 41?
I'll make a motion that we... I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Do I have a...
Is there a condition, the staff's recommended a condition if you choose to consider it?
Yes.
Could you just read in the condition on the record? I'm sorry. Thank you.
I got to find it.
On the back. Just slip it over.
With the recommendation from the staff that the petitionals shall obtain site plan approval from the plan, Planning Board for the proposed uses of the site.
Do I have a second? Tony, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Three, zero, one. Do I hear a petition, do I hear a motion on the second on case number 42?
I'll move the same on the second petition with the same criteria.
Same criteria. Do I have a second? Tony, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Three, zero, one. Thank you very much. Um, as obviously, I would look into everything. Um, and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and board for your time. I know it's a late night. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion of, uh, da, 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 da. What do we have? Any items to discuss? Gillian?
I don't have any items.
Do we have a joint meeting coming up with planning? Or didn't we, or don't we?
Nothing that's been scheduled.
Nothing's been scheduled? Okay. I didn't thought, thought we, I thought I saw something about it, um, from Mr. Bass. I wasn't sure. Okay. All right. Well, then I'm, I'm just crazy. It's getting late. All right. Um, approval of the minutes for October 26th?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of October 26th for discussion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Whoa, you can't, you were here. You were here?
I was not here, but I watched the TV, so we know exactly what happened.
Awesome. Four, zero, zero, zero. All right. Anything else before we adjourn?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you very cruch, very much.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Tony, all in favor, aye. Done. Thank you very much.